Okay.
Thank you, Christine. Appreciate it.
Appreciate that, Christine. Thank you, Trustee McDonald, clarifying that. Anyone else? All right, we'll bring it back, resume or close the public comment area. Next is consent agenda. These are meeting minutes of the Board of Trustees for June 9th, August 12th, August 25th, 2020. Are there any issues with the consent agenda these meeting minutes that you would wish to bring up? If not, can I get a motion to approve these consent agendas? Yes?
I do have one issue with the minutes. I apologize. I don't have my notes to reference the specific date of the minutes. But this is relative to the vote relative to the cash in lieu of for the cash in lieu of shares resolution.
Yeah.
I made a statement with my no vote. I would like to ask that the clerk insert that language into the record.
Is that language recorded? Is that where we got to go find that?
I have the language specifically. We can go back to the record if she would like. Otherwise, I would be happy to restate it for her.
Trustee McDonald, I can get that language from the recording and include it in the minutes.
Thank you, Crystal.
Okay. Anyone else? Okay, can I get a motion to approve our consent agenda with the addition of Trustee McDonald's comments for her vote?
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Trustee Gator.
Yes.
Trustee Jerome.
Yes.
Trustee Kenny.
Yes.
Trustee McDonald.
Yes.
Trustee Whitehouse.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Knutson.
Yes.
Mayor Hammond.
Yes. Okay, moving on to action items. Under F, first one, it's Clarifier Rehab Construction Contract. Staff's going to present Dave Meyer, engineer.
Good morning, Mayor, or I'm sorry, good evening, Mayor and members of the board. This is Dave Meyer, staff engineer. Before you is a request to approve a construction contract for rehabilitation to one of the clarifiers at our wastewater treatment plant. So there's four clarifiers at the plant and well, clarifiers in simplified terms can be thought of as giant circular settling tanks. Two of those giant circular settling tanks were originally constructed in 2002. Over time, both of those developed problems with their effluent launders. That's the inner perimeter around the clarifier. It's a trough where the treated wastewater is discharged into the, in route to the UV building for disinfection. One of those launders was rehab last year on one of the existing clarifiers. Now we like to rehab the second one the same way. That is replacing the existing old launder with a new construct, with a newly constructed concrete launder. In addition, the project also includes replacement of some of the metal mechanisms within a clarifier. And all that equipment has already been purchased by the town contractor will be installing that as part of this project. So a formal bidding process was held in conjunction with our higher engineer, Farnsworth. Two bids were received, one from Stanek and one from Hydro. Hydro was the lowest qualified bidder and recommended by our engineer and is also recommended by staff. Now we are seeking board approval to proceed with the construction contract with Hydro in a not to exceed amount of $153,240. The engineer's formal recommendation is included in your board package along with the bid tab. And I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have. Thank you.
Point of information, Mr. Myers, it says Hydro was 153,340. Is that, I think you said 240?
Yeah, you're right. Sorry about that. It's 340. Yeah.
So I just had a question, Mr. Meyer. I did notice that the bids were significantly different from Stan Tech to Hydro. And I think specifically the one area that I noticed that the most was, I believe, on the concrete work. There was almost $100,000 difference between the two bids. Do you have any idea why there was such a gap there between the two bids that we received?
The short answer, Trustee Gator, is no, I don't. Concrete prices have been very volatile in the past. We've seen them range from, you know, $500 a cubic yard to $5,000 a cubic yard. Depending on the contractor, where they can get their supplies from. I have not asked that question of any of the contractors to see why there's that big difference. Other than what I already said about, I've been seeing a lot of different variations in concrete prices. That's really all I can tell you on that.
Okay, are there any, oh, sorry, can I let you finish?
I'm sorry, I'm sorry. I will add that Stanic was the contractor that rehab our first clarifier. They completed that earlier this year and they did submit a bid for the second clarifier. And their bid, as you saw, was higher than Hydro's.
Okay, are there any concerns with staff that with that significant difference in the pricing that we're going to receive an inferior product if we do move forward with the Hydro?
No, I don't think so, Trustee Gator. I think Hydro has proven themselves to be a good contractor. Their bid was in good form. The engineer has worked with them. I personally have worked with them. Many of our staff have worked with them. I don't think we'll have any issues with them as far as an inferior product.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Dave, this is Trustee Jerome. You said that Stanic did the clarifier, the previous clarifier project that was finished earlier this year. Is basically, is it the same work that they did before on a different clarifier?
Trustee Jerome, that's exactly right. It's the exact same work.
Okay, so if you can recall, I don't recall it, but in comparison to their bid last time, was this bid much higher?
Last year, Stanic's bid for the first clarifier rehab was $229,000.
Okay.
Yeah.
Wow. Hydro came in pretty competitive, huh?
Yes, they did.
Must be a little hungry. Okay, who's painting it?
I'm not too sure who they hired as a subcontractor for the painting. That's in the bid tab somewhere. I can look that up if you need it.
I'll need to know that. Not tonight. Okay, anyone else have anything? Let's let the public comment on it this time then.
Mayor Hammond, I see no public comment at this time.
Good enough. If that's the case, we'll bring it back to the board. Can I get a motion to approve the construction contract for the clarifier?
Mr. Mayor, if I might, can you make that, I was out of town when the board packet came out and couldn't get on because it was on the new system. Can you make that subject to town attorney approval, just so I got a better chance to reread that contract?
Okay, can I get a motion to approve the clarify rehab construction contract with town attorney approval in future here?
Thank you.
Yep.
So I move that we approve the contract approval for the clarifier rehab construction in the not to exceed amount of $153,340. And that would be going to Hydro Construction Company and that would be after review by a town attorney.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Trustee Gator.
Yes.
Trustee Jerome.
Yes.
Trustee Kenny.
Yes.
Trustee McDonald.
Yes.
Trustee Whitehouse.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Knutson.
Yes.
Mayor Hammond.
Yes.
Okay, move on to item two, F2, Water Treatment Plant Expansion, CMR Process, Contract Amendment. Staff presentation, Dave.
Good evening again, Mayor, Dave Meyer, staff engineer. So in May of 2018, the town executed the CMR contract with Hydro for the construction of our water treatment plan expansion. CMR stands for Construction Manager at Risk. That's a project delivery method. A copy of that original contract is included in your board package. The town has since obtained SRF funding for this project. That's after we signed the original CMR contract. And that funding is sourced from the federal government. And with that comes federal project requirements that were not written into the original CMR contract. Those requirements for the contractor, those requirements are for the contractor to employ Davis Bacon wages, utilize American iron and steel, and the other requirements that are listed in the agenda item summary. These requirements fall primarily on the contractor, Hydro Construction. In order for the contractor to fulfill these SRF requirements during construction, I prepared a contract amendment that stipulates all of those SRF requirements. And all of those stipulations came from CDPHE. I think there's about 24 pages of those stipulations. And CDPHE has since approved the draft of this contract amendment. They are okay with it. A copy of that amendment, of the amendment is in your board package. I also sent the draft of this amendment to Jim Urich at Hydro and he indicated his verbal acceptance of it. In addition to pending those SRF requirements, the contract amendment also includes a few minor housekeeping modifications to the original CMR contract. So I looked pretty carefully at the original contract. There are a couple of things that needs to be updated. They mentioned Stan Tech, they mentioned the wrong county, and a couple of other odds and ends that are spelled out in your, in the agenda item summary. So at this time, we're requesting authorization from the board to execute this contract amendment. There are no dollar amounts associated with this amendment. And I'd be happy to answer any questions you have at this time. Thank you again.
Real quick, now, the only thing that really grabs me on the list here is the Davis Bacon wages. Okay, it's an automatic increase. Has it been known, has Hydro been anticipating this is a Davis Bacon wage job?
Yes, they are anticipating, and I spoke with Jim on that. He has seen what you are looking at right now and he is okay with it.
Well, are we going to be okay with it? We're the ones that are going to pay that, or somebody's got to pay that, right? I mean, I don't want a problem here because nobody thought of this.
I think once we get the guaranteed maximum price, that will be incorporated into GMP.
Oh, sure. Okay. All right, good. Anyone else? No? All right, let's open it up to the public.
Mayor Hammond, I see no public comment at this time.
Okay, we'll bring it back to the board. Can I get a motion to approve this item on F2, Water Treatment Plant Expansion to CMR Contract? It's an amendment as described by our engineer, Dave Meyer.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, please. If we could change, I'm sorry, I was trying to talk on mute. I apologize. Again, Mr. Mayor, could we get this?
Subject to attorney approval.
Yeah.
All right.
So I guess I would amend, do I need to amend my motion there?
Yeah, well, as long as the second consents, you're fine.
Okay, yeah, so I make a motion, we approve the Water Treatment Plant Expansion CMR Contract Amendment. And also with the stipulation that the, it goes through attorney review and approval.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Trustee Gator.
Yes.
Trustee Jerome.
Yes.
Trustee Kenny.
Yes.
Trustee McDonald.
Yes.
Trustee Whitehouse.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Knutson.
Yes.
Mayor Hammond.
Yes. Okay, let's move on to item F3. This is a space needs discussion. Kelly.
Good evening, Mayor and Board of Trustees. Before you tonight is an update on the space needs discussion. So as the board recalls, we've been having this conversation. Our staff currently occupies five separate buildings in the downtown area for our town hall operations. These buildings are no longer sufficient for our immediate need. We also know that we are working on a permanent solution for town hall, but we need to do something more immediate than that. So we've looked at considering modular units, and I'll get into that. And then we also have a potential other option for a building off of a building we already own. So this was, there were some drawings in your packet tonight. So the modular unit, we had discussed this. If we were to buy it, it'd be about $106,000 plus offsite improvements needed for that. And that would be able to hold about four to six employees and that would be located off of the corner of Fourth Street and Harrison Avenue is the location that we had thought what might be a good place for that. Another option is expanding off the back of the Harrison House that we have. And we could do a one-story option or a two-story option. The cost for square foot, as you see, it does go down when you go to the two-story option. The one-story option is about $207 a square foot and the two-story option is $181 per square foot. You can see that those would be, you know, definitely would impact our downtown area. This is a potential to be a property that we could potentially rent after we're moving into town hall. We could sell this property for potential commercial development. Or there could be an unknown future use that we would need to be able to use this location. So you can see that, you know, we have 19 employees that we could hold on that one-story option. On the two-story, we could hold about 31 employees. Of course, we could always, there is some conference room space that could always be converted if needed. Going to this two-story option would potentially push out the timeline of how quickly we need to build town hall. In light of all the other capital projects that we do have ahead of us, that might be a good option to consider. I know that there has been some questions about parking. I did want to address that real quick. We would also allow for, including within this design, ADA parking at the building that you can see here on the slide. So that would be included. And then angled parking for around Centennial Park. I've spoken to our Public Works Director, Mr. Gowing, about that improvement which you've already considered making. And in terms of employee parking, we could also have our employees use the existing off-street parking that we have now, but that angled parking would also help. Something like this would still need to go to our planning commission. I know that's been a question for them to do a review of this as well. But I'll go back to the slide here and just open it up if there's any questions from the Board of Trustees.
Any questions, board?
I do have a question, Ms. Hodeling. You know, I think this is certainly a subject worth discussing. I know there's been some issues about parking rates, which I think we'll need to discuss. But I mean, once we get a town hall built, I mean, does the, does the town have to sell this? Could they actually lease it or is there a statutory, because there's no walk-in, there's no turnkey office space in this town that I'm aware of. I mean, does a town need to sell it as an asset or could they actually lease it? Or is that something that the town doesn't even wish to get involved in?
All those are open options for the board. I think you could, you could sell it, you could rent it. Or you could hold on to it, not knowing what you might want to do with it. Maybe this is potential use for town facility that, you know, that might be needed. So you could certainly, there's an option to lease this out because you're right, we don't have many commercial spaces. And this could be, you know, an incubator space, it could be great office space. So I think there's a lot of possibilities with it.
Anyone else?
Thank you. Yeah, I do have some comments. When we were, when we have, and just from a little input, because I serve on the comprehensive plan steering committee. And an opportunity that we have in that group is to kind of analyze the look and feel of other downtowns and a vision of what Wellington might be someday. As folks either build up or continue to do improvements downtown in the Old Town area. This, the two-story option here that I see, kind of aligns with a lot of the direction of where downtowns go from where ours is. I could see this building being an opportunity as a catalyst for other owners on, in Old Town. And specifically on Main Street to see the potential of what could be available and the opportunities and just ideas of, and to be creative. I see this as a great opportunity to postpone town hall. And knowing some of our capital improvement plans and how extensive and costly that they will be and giving us some wiggle room to be maybe a little bit more responsible and putting off such a significant project, like building town hall, whether it be for five years or more, or whatever the case might be after we analyze the needs. I think that this could potentially be something that really puts Wellington in a more responsible financially position and can serve as a catalyst for commercial purposes. I love everything about this opportunity. And I loved also that we can preserve as is that Harrison House part of it because it is a beautiful building and a wonderful asset that the town has. And then also be able to build onto it and provide such great additional uses and opportunities in the future, whether it is selling the property, renting it for commercial purposes, or whatever the case might be. So I love this opportunity to see such great opportunities for this building.
Anyone else?
Yeah, I have a question. Just, I mean, maybe it's a little schematic, but where is there an elevator to get to the second floor? Would that not be an ADA requirement?
I have spoken with our planning director, Cody Byrd, and feel free to hop in. If this is, if the second floor is being used for private offices and not for public use, we would not need to install an elevator. I know that's something that the board could consider. It would eat up additional office space and space for town staff. And if that were the case, if we're going to go and build the elevator, we might recommend expanding out to the north at that point, which would be a whole other different design. So Cody, do you have anything additional to add that I missed?
Good evening. This is Cody Byrd, Planning Director. I believe Ms. Hodeling did a great job summarizing that. The only thing I was going to add is that if the, as part of the board's consideration, if this space was to be used in the future for rental or lease purposes or resale, you might want to consider what that elevator means for the, for the long-term future use. It's certainly something we wouldn't want to overlook when we have the opportunity to do it right now. But as Ms. Hodeling said, if the, if the second floor is used for private offices, the elevator would not be a requirement.
Well, point of information, I mean, do we, if it's still private offices, do we not, what happens if we have a staff member that is a wheelchair user? I mean,
Yeah, so Mr. Whitehouse, this is Mr. Byrd again. In the situation of that nature, typically what?
You cut out, Cody.
Maybe he'll jump back in. We'll hold that thought. Go ahead.
I think what he was going to say is that if that were the situation similar to how our offices are now, we would find a reasonable combination on the first floor of the facility.
You'd have to. Anyone else?
Thank you.
I have one quick question. I've spoken with you in depth about this and I, I love the two-story option. The idea of beautifying our downtown area with more modulators is not necessarily, I think, a top choice for anybody. So in the event that the, what, what is the plan? And you may have covered this already. I apologize if I missed it, but would we be removing the modular that's existing in Centennial Park? Would this be able to accommodate the staff that's in that building? I know we've done a little bit to update it, but it is a little bit of a blight.
The old Boys and Girls Club, you mean? That property? Yes, if we were to go to the two-story option, that is something that we could easily house the staff that's in that building into this new facility on Harrison. So that could be demoed sooner rather than later and kind of get going on Centennial Park design and ideas and beautification.
Thank you so much. I'm really excited about the opportunities that the Harrison House offers up to the community. It looks very similar to some of the properties that I had the opportunity to manage for the city of Fort Collins that they use for incubator and nonprofit spaces, once they were done using them for primarily their municipal use. So it's really exciting to see us make that transition a little bit off of Main Street, but still be downtown. And then helping convert that downtown area to future commercial use. So I applaud you in your ingenuity in this challenge. Great job.
Anyone else?
Last thing I wanted to mention, just for the record, was regarding resale of modular units. I know that you did some, you looked into that, Kelly. Could you give us some details on that and wait? Thank you.
Sure. As a, similar to a vehicle, it would be a depreciating capital item for us if we were to purchase the modular, which is what we are looking at. So in what I'm told from the industry speaking with our, the folks in the field, we wouldn't get our money back essentially. And an option like this to expand off a building, you would get your money back. Should you want to sell it or should you want to use this as lease space?
Anyone else?
I would just suggest, I mean, the modular, holding four to six employees based on cost and then looking at, even if you looked at the single-story addition. I mean, you're getting, you know, obviously you're paying more, but you're also housing a huge number of people. And if you went to the two-story module, two-story version of this addition or proposal that, I mean, I don't know if that accommodates all staff at this point.
Yes, it would. It would accommodate all the stuff that we have, looking at the five-year plan for our staffing needs. And it's still a work in progress. I think we've got about 35 to 40 employees that would use those administrative type of office space. So at that point, if we're bumping up to the five, six-year mark, that's when you start converting some of those conference room space to office spaces and it could be done. So this is what is listed here as your more moderate estimate of employees, but we can certainly fit more. We're obviously doing that right now in our current facilities. So we know how to do the sardine can pretty well at this point. But so this is your low-end estimate of how many employees that we could fit in there.
Anyone else?
Yeah, any idea on timeframe, Kelly?
Let me skip to next steps. So if the board were to approve either one-story or two-story option, next we would work on an actual contract to bring back before the Board of Trustees. We would also do, follow our own process through the site plan at the planning commission and reaffirm that the conditional use grant that we have. In terms of the construction of this, I think they could get going tail end of this year and have something ready to go by end of spring, I think. And knowing that we have the current existing Harrison House, we can keep staff in there while construction's going on, which meets some additional needs that we have. So looking at next spring for an opening. Hopeful of you, as you know, construction timelines, assuming everything goes to plan. So it could be, you know, end of spring, but so, yeah.
Yeah, I'd say you're six to nine month build, so.
Yeah.
Yep.
Absolutely.
And how does that fit with your, with the town's needs? I mean, is that, is that doable or are we still going to be really pressing for space?
I think that's doable. This is a far better solution for us. We already have staff that's hybrid working from home. I think if the team knew that there was some light at the end of the tunnel, that kind of gives us some extra momentum to hang in there a little bit longer and to make this happen because it seems like a much better solution for us rather than what we currently have in place.
No, it's a great use of the space. I like the ideas that Infusion came up with, so I think it's a good option for us.
And I think, yeah, Ms. Hodeling, I think your comment regarding the light at the end of the tunnel, I mean, all the light at the end of the tunnel, I mean, all staff has been, uh, they're working under some difficult conditions, I shall say. And I think, I think doing something sooner as opposed to later, I, I think that is very helpful. I think that's a step in the right direction. So thank you for exploring this possibility.
Anyone else? Okay, uh, final comment here on the board. Uh, I'll, I'll, I'd like the two-story option, uh, very much. Uh, I, I, I second all the comments that the board has brought up. Uh, I think it's a major catalyst for downtown. Um, it'll give you an idea of, you know, I, I mean, there's things in the future that you can talk about with the other properties and the other buildings that doesn't need to be talked about yet. But, um, I think if you're going to do it, go, 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 go all the way. And it'll be done in a year anyway. But I do like the idea that it's going to be put through our own uh, rigors and procedures such as the planning commission, get ferreted out on the parking. We don't want to take away from our restaurants, that sort of thing, you know? You gotta have ADA, all that kind of thing. So I, I, it's going to, it sounds like it's going to go through the normal processes that any other construction would. And, uh, that being said, I, I, I like the whole thing. Um, uh, now some of those comments that you had answered, Kelly, were brought to me by the planning chair as well. And, uh, I think that you answered those pretty well tonight that we will be going through that process. Okay? So if that, if there's nothing more from the board, uh, I'd like to go ahead and offer it up to the public this time.
Mr. Mayor, we do have a comment from Melissa Whitehouse. Melissa, if you'd like to go ahead and speak, unmute yourself, please.
Thank you very much, board and staff. Very quick question. I appreciate the fact that this is going to go through the normal planning commission process. I would like to make a minor suggestion as far as the patio. Is there any chance that we could do rooftop patio to save some space and possibly add some parking along that same line? Thank you.
Good thought. Anyone else?
Mayor, we have no other public comment at this time.
They will bring it back to the board. Those kinds of ideas can be bounced around as you go through it, Kelly, you know? It'd be fun to have a rooftop thing with some lights up, you know, like that's what they're doing in these downtown areas, you know, might bring up, make, update things. Anyway, that can be done down the road. All right, if that's all that's been said, can we go ahead and, I'm not quite sure, are we just approving the process of going forward tonight? We're not picking a design, are we?
Not picking a design, but what I'm hearing from the board is, um, the board's okay moving forward with the two-story option. Is that correct?
I think so.
So, that's all I need.
Go ahead. Can I get a, can I get a motion to approve the space needs? Do I need to prove, to prove this, uh, uh, plan for our, um, staff to move forward with a two-story option here with Infusion?
He doesn't need a vote, Mr. Mayor.
Oh, it's just direction. Okay, good. Sorry, my mistake. I make mistakes, you know, but moving on. I like it, Kelly. All right, moving on. Number four, resolution thirty-seven, twenty-twenty. Uh, this is a resolution granting town administrator the authority to purchase water shares.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Kelly?
Um, as we all know, it's incredibly difficult to, um, quickly and efficiently acquire water shares. Our current purchasing policy limits the town administrator, um, the authority to purchase up to thirty thousand dollars without having to go back to the Board of Trustees. Um, with that kind of process, it, it's a competitive market as we all know. Um, so there's language that lists in here that, um, the administrator shall notify the board when shares become available. And so in practice, that would look like a phone call or an email to notify the board, um, just through that due diligence process, not looking there, that's not a, a place of saying yes or no, since you're, would grant them authority through this, but just as a heads up. Um, and then also the ability to, uh, purchase water shares within the established per acre foot, uh, set forth in resolution twenty-eight dash twenty-twenty, which is your cash and loo. Um, so they would have the authority to go up to that limit, but knowing that, um, there is some finesse in terms of negotiation that would need to be done. So, um, this would just kind of establish a baseline. So you're not having something that's, uh, above and beyond per se. Um, besides that, there, there's also provision that we would not exceed the, the raw water purchase budgeted line item in, in the annual budget. Um, unless that was something that was pre-authorized by the Board of Trustees that you said, hey, we just heard of a big crop of, uh, you know, shares available and, and they already got that authorization ahead of time. Um, that's all I have in terms of, um, uh, just a presentation. Are there any questions?
Members?
Uh, this is trustee Whitehouse. Um, question, do we have any? Have we determined what the, obviously this is a scarce resource and, uh, you know, do we have any sort of policy? Like what is the appropriate amount or is it just as much as we can? I mean, it's, it, it's scarce. There's not going to be more of it. I mean, so I was just wondering if there's any policy side discussion regarding what might be the appropriate direction, you know? That's all.
I think it's a great question and something that, um, you know, would be driven by our building permits, our population projection, um, working very closely with our engineering and planning staff. Um, I don't think we would just acquire water, um, you know, endlessly unless there was an actual reason. And so we would align very closely with what the current needs of the community and future projections would be.
Anyone else?
I did have a question on the, with the cash and loop policy. It, with the number that it's not to exceed, is that the number that's the expected forty percent increase that we're at right now? I just was a little confused as to which number that would be dealing with in our cash and loop policy.
I would have to pull that up more closely. Um, but I, I think you're right. It's that, um, that forty percent, uh, number as listed.
Okay.
Anyone else?
That's my same concern, whether it was the, the current price or the inflation price for the next year expected expense. So uh, I guess that's.
Current.
Well, Kelly, are you going, we don't know if we're going with the current or the inflated price, do we?
Well, you, yeah, I would say you would have the ability to go up to the inflated price, but knowing that you're going to be within the, the bounds of that, the annual market. Um, that just seemed that we needed some type of placeholder, um, you know, not having to say an exact dollar amount because otherwise it would have tied the resolution to something that we would constantly be having to update because if you do change your other resolution, that would reflect into this one as well.
Okay, no, that's right. Anyone else?
I had a second question, just to clarify. It's like, do you see, what is the role of the town treasurer in this as far as, is it something where the administrator has required to work in conjunction with the town treasurer or how exactly does that play into this?
Um, just as the, the person that oversees the, the budget essentially. So just ensuring that, um, we're within the annual budget. So working closely with your town treasurer to, to verify those numbers that we're not exceeding, um, that the checks are cut properly, um, that we're, you know, falling within, um, our current limit that we have.
Okay, perfect.
Anyone else? Okay, I think, correct me if I'm wrong, Kelly, but I think the being pointed behind this is yes, you're going to reach out to the board with the potential sale. You want to execute it. But what this does is gives you the flexibility to act quickly versus waiting two weeks for a board meeting to get approved. Right, because we can miss a sale. And you got to be quick these days. All right, that's it. So if no one else has anything, I'm going to turn it over to the public.
Mayor Hammond, I just want to make it clear to the record that the intent of this is to negotiate in good faith and not, not set market value at two hundred and eighty thousand.
Yeah.
Try and negotiate in good faith what current market value is, correct?
That's exactly right. Right? Well, we're going to get notified. So if you've got a problem, we can bring it up.
Ju- just like anything that we purchase, um, through our purchasing policy, we want to make sure that it is competitive, um, that it's in within the market price. So, um, again, the only reason this was tied to that, that number um, is so we didn't have to constantly tweak, uh, an arbitrary number not to exceed. And then that also tips our hand a little bit because if people saw an exact number in a resolution, they're going to say, well, I want that full nugget there. Um, that's not what we're saying. We're saying we're still negotiating the market rate for it.
Thank you, Ms. Hodeling.
Yes, let's negotiate it down, please. Okay, let's take it to the public.
Mayor Hammond, I see no public comment at this time.
All right, we'll bring it back to the board. Uh, with all the questions, if no one else has anything else, can I get a motion to approve the resolution thirty-seven dash twenty-twenty?
Mayor Hammond, if I might, can it, can we change one? Can we tweak one set of language?
I'm sure we can.
The, the concern I've got is the town administrator shall notify the board when shares become available and she'll be given authority to negotiate and purchase shares. I think what I'd rather say is, and, and by this resolution has authority to purchase shares. I, I don't want the board in a ex parte communication telling the board, telling the town administrator she has authority to, to purchase shares. If we can just work that language somewhat, it, it, I, I don't want it subject to that question if that's fine. All right.
Any issues with that?
Sounds great.
Uh, Mr. Marsh, can you, are, are you just suggesting a change in the last sentence now therefore?
No, no, what I'm worried about is in the whereas, the town administrator shall, it's the one, two, three, fourth whereas. Town administrator shall know the board when shares become available and she'll be given authority to negotiate and purchase water shares below the established cash and loo amount. My concern is, is that I don't want this to appear that you are notifying the, the board and the board ex parte without a board meeting is giving approvals. As I understand what this ordinance is doing, the board is giving authority to the town administrator to purchase water shares. The town administrator is saying, I'll call the board, but you, you're saying, I, I don't want something saying we had a meeting because she contacted each one of the board members. That would be inappropriate. I, I mean, I appreciate she'll contact board members, but you've given her authority by this resolution as I understand it.
Do we need to change given to shall have authority?
I, I think that would work.
Okay.
Okay, all right. She still gets the flexibility of buying shares. That's the intent, right?
That, that's the intent. The only concern, and obviously the, clearly the interim town administrator has the authority to act under this ordinance. It would be my assumption. But, but that is, that said, um, I, I, I think that she has absolute authority and, and this future administrator would have authority as well to purchase those shares. The understanding is they'll call the board and say this is what we're doing.
Yeah.
I mean, it, it, I appreciate the need to act immediately though.
Okay. Well, can we get a motion to approve this resolution with those changes?
I know the motion that we approve resolution thirty-seven dash twenty-twenty. Resolution granting the town administrator the authority to purchase water shares subject to the attorney changes, um, to the fourth paragraph, Brad?
Uh, it's the fourth whereas, yes.
The fourth whereas clause in the resolution presented.
Second, roll call, please.
Trustee Gator?
Yes.
Trustee Jerome?
Yes.
Trustee Kenny?
Yes.
Trustee McDonald?
Yes.
Trustee Whitehouse?
Yes.
Mayor Pretend Knutson?
Yes.
Mayor Hammond?
Yes. Okay, let's go find him. Item five. This is an annexation agreement, development agreement for the Pooter School District subdivision. Presentation staff, Cody.
Good evening, Mayor and Board. This is planning director Cody Byrd. Can everyone hear me all right?
Yep.
Okay, great. Bear with me. I had some technical issues earlier. I'm out there in that connection here at the greenhouse. Um, so this, uh, agenda item that I'm presenting to you tonight, um, you've seen it several times in the past. Um, this is the current version of the, uh, annexation agreement and development agreement for the Pooter School District subdivision. You might recall that the last time our board saw this, uh, we were still in negotiations with school district staff, uh, to work out a couple of issues regarding uh, raw water dedications, use of town water and off-site, uh, road improvements and.
I lost Cody. Anybody else?
Yeah, I don't hear me there.
Cody, you're out.
Can't hear you, Cody.
Maybe, uh, could you, could you do the audio via cell phone?
We can see your video.
Cell phone.
Slight technical delay.
He can see us.
I think he can hear us too. It's just that he can't talk. It's okay, Cody. We feel your pain.
Yes.
You may want to turn off your speaker before you connect.
It's helpful. While he's getting on, I can probably, uh, lead some, lead you through this. Um, this is an agreement that pretty much you, I think you've seen with, um, the, that we presented before. Uh, my understanding is, is that Cody would be seeking approval for this, this evening. Um, with the understanding that there were some minor changes that were included in this. One of them was, is that we would just use the, I believe, the annexation agreement. They made a change that provided they would simply use the water dedication that is in the, um, that is in the, uh, uh, development agreement. Um, and, and the other is, is he limited this to being just one lot. Um, that said, I, I think he's looking for approvals. We'll see if we can get him back here in a sec. Cody?
Are you on? Oh, no.
Were there any questions specifically related to the agreement?
Yeah, anyone?
I did have a question and this is again, and maybe my recollection was wrong. I did bring this up to, um, Ms. Hodeling. And unfortunately I did email this to Mr. Byrd. I know he's trying to get on. Um, but I was under the impression from our discussion on this that we were going to try and remain consistent with the change in our cash and loop policy. But the number that I see in here for the cash and loo amounts, um, for the remaining one point one-six acre feet is not in um, alignment with our current cash and loop policy. So I was just trying to understand, was my recollection of our discussions incorrect? Or was this a change that was made, um, after the board discussions?
Uh, trustee Gator, I might, I did ask this question of Mr. Byrd and my recollection is that since this process has been going on prior to the change in cash and loo, and I could be wrong about this. I, I would prefer to hear from him, but my understanding it's operating under the terms of the agreement at the time they started these negotiations, but I would defer to Mr. Byrd as to giving a definitive answer.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, I was, I was just trying to recall.
Kelly, do you know the answer?
I believe that is correct. It looks like Cody's about to join.
Okay.
Phone. Crystal, if you want to promote that seven, eight, five number, that's Cody.
Well.
There he is. Unmute, Cody.
All right, can anyone hear me? Oh my gosh, that's fantastic. I am so sorry for the communications. Uh, I think the town I am so sorry for the communications. I think the town needs to buy a new laptop for the planning department so it can use Zoom effectively.
Let's get on that, Kelly.
All just aside, my apologies for the challenges there.
Not your fault, Cody.
And, thank you. In the process, I understand that there were a couple of questions asked and some answers provided, and I wasn't able to keep up with that, trying to manage the phone as well. Could you please start over with any questions that I can help answer?
Sir, so my question, Mr. Byrd was, and I emailed this to you earlier, and I apologize for I got it sooner. But, and I'm just trying to remember my recollection from our discussion on this, but I was under the impression that we were going to be operating under our current cash-in lieu process. But the numbers that I see here for the remaining 1.16 acre feet are not following our current cash-in lieu process, so I didn't know if that was, if my recollection of what we had discussed was incorrect, or if there was a different process that was being followed, so if you could maybe address that difference.
Absolutely, and that's a great question. So, when the direction that was given to town staff was to operate under our current water policy for cash-in lieu, subject to the market price of water shares. If you remember, when the town updated its cash-in lieu price, we established two dollar amounts. One was the market price for a North Pooter share, and one was the inflated factor that accounts for administration fees, inflation for future years. The staff understood the direction given was to operate the market value price, which was established at $200,000 in the cash-in lieu policy, as opposed to implementing the cash price that we have set for residential new construction.
Got it. Thank you very much.
Absolutely. Thank you for the question.
Anyone else? No?
Mayor, if you don't mind, this is Cody. I got cut off in the part of my presentation, and I wanted to highlight just a couple of things in this as well. You do have two agreements in front of the board tonight. The first is an annexation agreement. And this is very nearly in the same form presented in your policy, or in your packet that you've seen before. You might have noticed in the staff recommendation, we did encourage the board to approve these agreements and substantially the forms submitted. And the reason we asked for that request is, after the packet was published, and we anticipate maybe some minor revisions again from the school district, we just wanted to have a little bit of flexibility to make any necessary wording changes. And then I can share with you exactly what I mean with that. In the annexation agreement, there was one piece of language that the school district was very concerned about and wanted us to consider. The highlighted change that you see on the screen share at the moment. It's, let me see if I can make this go away. So if you can see in 5A under the raw water, the school district, since they own all the development properties within the annexation, they wanted to remove the as adopted by the town and request that it's just as agreed to in a development agreement. This is a fairly minor change. I don't feel like it's substantive from what was presented in your packet. But as we hear comments similar in this nature, we would like the ability for staff to reflect those revisions in the final document. For reference, the school district is anticipating taking action on this at their October 27th meeting. So they'll be a little bit behind when our board is considering it. But that's the reason why we asked for it and substantially the forms submitted. To further illustrate that point, I'd like to also screen share with you the development agreement. Again, this is largely in the same format that was presented to the board in the past with the addition of the raw water and the off-site road adjustments. But again, I'll get up here in just a second. So this is the development agreement, and one of the things that, we've all looked at this so many times, we didn't realize that in the annexation agreement, we referred to the separate development agreement as development agreement 18 times, but the actual title was memorandum of agreement for public improvements. So we wanted to reflect that change for consistency with the other document, and then throughout, making sure that the the language actually reflects what we're calling it in the annexation agreement. So for minor changes like that, we requested the ability to make those changes in the final document. Obviously, if the board has concerns with that, you would be able to table these agreements until the following meeting. But we wanted to be transparent and at least identify what those changes were.
Anyone have concerns about this?
Can you tell us more about the off-site road improvements? In the agreement, I'm having a hard time understanding if there is a specified amount, if it's just the amount that they had dedicated to road improvements and they're going to be providing that amount, or if there is additional?
Absolutely. So, and I'm going to screen share again, just so you can look at the same thing that I'm looking at. And, give me one second to pull it up. So this is the section on the off-site roads. Again, there's one revision there. This was changing the verb tense. They wanted to say, and I agree, that should say, have further agreed to expedite, determine, and accept the funding contribution. Previously, it had said will agree to or may agree to, and we wanted to make sure that it specifies that we have agreed to it. But so for this particular off-site road improvement, for the intersections at Highway 1 and County Road 9 and County Road 62E, the town has undertaken a study of these intersections to identify a planning level cost estimate and to further identify who the appropriate parties would be to making those improvements and what percentage share each of those parties would be likely to contribute. But because those numbers are not available, and we've reflected that in the language in this paragraph, because those numbers aren't available, what we are agreeing to is that the school district will pay a sum of $200,000 for their intersection contribution for those offsites. In addition to that, the school district still has public improvements of the roadways that they will be making as part of their project that they have already budgeted for. And I think in your staff report, not in this development agreement, we did highlight the fact that the this $200,000 that the school district would be paying for the off-site improvements does not impact their road impact fee of 389,844 that is due as part of just the normal course of development. So the $200,000 would be in addition to the public improvements that they're already making, and in addition to the the road impact fees that the development would pay for development of Lot 1, Block 1, Pooter School District subdivision. The other significant factors for the school district is that, as this bullet points out, they do not want to be responsible for the design and construction of the intersection improvements. That would happen at a future date, and they do not want to be brought back into a design of those improvements. They'd rather just make the payment and be out of the conversation on that front. And then, further, for development of Lot 1, Block 1, Pooter School District subdivision, because of their bond authorizations and the limits on that, they don't want to need to come back for additional fees for development of this, and this simply states that they're not obligated to come back for financial or design for off-site road improvements related to this development of Lot 1, Block 1. The school district does have other lots within the development that would be subject to a development agreement that they would have the same negotiations, and we would have better numbers for them at that time, so we would know know what the off-site road improvements would be. Did I give you a long-winded answer?
You did. And then, again, I guess we come back to the negotiations that we had discussed in the past where the school district had maybe offered, or I don't want to speak on their behalf, but a consideration was that they wouldn't do the improvements there and instead utilize that money towards this project, so we weren't improving it and then tearing out improvements to do additional improvements. And that's not the case anymore. We will continue with their improvements right now?
Well, so the school district is required to improve County Road 9 and County Road 62E adjacent to their site. That is part of their road improvement projects that's contemplated in this agreement. In addition to that, they, because of their development, without the, I'll call it the interim, I'm sorry, the ultimate design and construction of changes to the intersection, they're still obligated to make improvements that meet the safety objectives of opening the school. And so that's what they're obligated to do, is to make the necessary improvements to be able to open safely. So they have to make those, the $200,000 would be the balance of what would have been spent on making road improvements that we would tear out later.
Okay. Thank you. But just to kind of like bring all of that together, the two numbers that I saw totaled to about $500,000 that Pooter School District is contributing to right-of-way improvements. $200,000 for the intersection, and then the $300,000 that was like an overage that they're cutting out for this. Is that correct, Cody? So a total of like $500,000-ish?
Not quite. There's $389,000 that's the road impact fee, and that is obligated by the developer irrespective of any off-site improvements. That's the fee that pays for, that the town uses for maintenance of existing roadways that the impacts of this development would be creating for the town. So that's different from the off-site intersection improvements that are not being constructed right now, but the school is paying cash for future improvements.
Okay.
So the $200,000 is the obligation for the school district. And that was consistent with the thinking of town staff in terms of what would have been constructed in order to make some adjustments to the alignment of the county roads with the highway to improve those corners. But we wouldn't want to tear those out now, or in the future, to just reconstruct them and have that money lost.
Well, and just for clarification, can you tell me what a road impact fee is for the town of Wellington?
Absolutely. The road impact fee, well, let me, I should clarify, you're asking for how it's calculated, or are you asking for what it's used for?
What is it used for?
Thank you for the clarification. So, road impact fees are used by the town to make road improvements or for maintenance when the traffic from a development that's generated is deteriorating the roadways, or to address other improvements like pedestrian crossings in our downtown. So those road impact fees are used generally by the town to compensate for the overall impact of development on the town's existing road networks.
Thank you.
So that's almost $100,000 that can be used for future road.
No, $389,000 is the road impact fee that can be used by the town for necessary improvements, upgrades to our existing road network. The school district is also contributing $200,000 for intersection improvements. That $200,000 would be earmarked by the town to be used for improvements at these intersections.
Okay.
Has the $200,000 been ran by PSD staff? Is that sounding like have they seen this and have considered it, or we've had communication with them about it already?
That's exactly what staff has been working on with the school district staff. This was actually their proposal that we reviewed and we accepted. We agreed with their methodology.
That makes sense.
So, so yes, this is the same agreement.
They're meeting this night at the same time with the same agenda item, correct?
Their meeting is tonight. They pulled this item off of their agenda for tonight and opted to move it to October 27th. But this is the same version with the couple revisions that I shared with you. That was the information I got from school district staff over the weekend.
So. Any other comments?
I did just have a question with the road improvement number with the $200,000. With looking at the work that's going to have to be done with improving that intersection, is that something that staff feels is a reasonable contribution for the school district's portion of that? I know, obviously, we don't know final numbers yet.
Yes, we do believe it's reasonable. I would suggest that based on just a very rough numbers for anticipated costs for some of the intersection improvements that the town is in conceptual consideration of, this is probably a low number. But with lacking better information that won't be available for another month or so, this seems very fair. And we do know that the school district will be a contributing factor when they develop the other two lots within their subdivision as well. We feel this is a reasonable number, and we're comfortable moving forward with it. And school district staff has stated the same.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, let's turn it over to public comment.
Mayor, I don't see any public comment at this time.
We'll bring it back to the board. Can I get a resolution or amendment, sorry, a motion to approve the annexation agreement and development agreement for the Pooter School District subdivision as outlined by our town planner, Cody Byrd?
I'm moved.
I'll second.
Roll call, please.
Trustee Gator?
Yes.
Trustee Jerome?
Yes.
Trustee Kenny?
Yes.
Trustee McDonald?
Yes.
Trustee Whitehouse?
Yes.
Mayor Pretend Knutson?
Yes.
Mayor Hammond?
Yes. Thank you, Cody. Nice job getting all that done. Let's move on. Item six. This is the Resolution 36-2020. Oh, sorry, I'm on the wrong one here. Make sure. Yes, 36-2020. It's a resolution finding a substantial compliance for annexation of property into the town of Wellington and establishing public hearing to go through this. Another staff presentation by town planner, Cody Byrd. Can you hear us, Cody?
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, I kept the phone going. Hopefully, that still works.
All right.
Are you able to hear me?
I can hear you.
Perfect, thank you. Again, this is Cody Byrd, Planning Director. This next agenda item is for another annexation. This is for the small commercial property along Sixth Street, just south of the Days Inn. There's a location map included in your board packet. And this is something that we've talked with the property owner and several potential purchasers over the years. There's been some interest in redeveloping this parcel or reusing the existing building with a facelift. But the challenge they run into is this is a property that's still in the county, and it's on a private septic system, and it used to be served water by Northern Colorado Water Association. And they have indicated that they no longer desire to provide water service for this site. So in order for the property to become viable for redevelopment, they need to annex into the town so that we can provide water and sewer services, as well as other municipal services for the site. As the board might recall from previous annexation procedures, it's a very defined process that the town has to follow in order to annex a property into the town. State statutes are very clear and very specific on the process that we use, beginning with simply a consideration by the board of the annexation petition, the request from the owner to annex the property into the town, and that's included in your packet tonight. And the board is going to, or it's recommended by staff that the board find that this property is in substantial compliance with the state statutes, meaning that the property is eligible for annexation, and it meets all the town's requirements or will as part of the annexation. And the board would do that by resolution. There's a draft resolution that was prepared by staff and included in your packet with the findings that staff recommends, including the annexation petition as an exhibit. And if the board finds it appropriate to proceed with annexation of this property, you can adopt that resolution as presented. And then staff would refer the proposed annexation request to the Planning Commission for consideration. And then we would bring it back to the board for final consideration in a public hearing. The resolution that's presented to you in accordance with statute sets the date and time for a public hearing for December 8th. That's within the statutorily defined window for the public hearing as of the date of the resolution adopted. That's within the statutorily defined window for the public hearing as of the date of the resolution adoption. Um, so it's a, it's a pretty narrow set of windows that we have to hit for the timelines. Uh, but I have checked and double-checked to make sure that we can make that work uh, in accordance with our planning commission schedule, board schedule and holiday schedule since it's that time of year, um, and this process does, the, the timeline does fit the statutory requirements. I'd be happy to answer any questions that the board might have, uh, regarding this, this annexation request.
Any questions, board members?
Well, this is Trustee Whitehouse. Looking at this parcel, I mean, is there going to be a roadway dedication requirement, uh, on the east side of Sixth? And also what do you think the, is this in a tr- transitional zoning? Or is this, uh, C-three zoning or is that to be determined?
Thank you for the question, Trustee Whitehouse. Um, the, the short answer is those, those items are going to be considered as part of the annexation request. But I will tell you that in staff's, uh, opinion, um, the right-of-way dedication as well as an easement dedication along Sixth Street would be a requirement. Um, that's been discussed with the property owner and they've actually already hired a, a surveyor to draw up those dedications. They've not been recorded, but they already are working towards that goal. Um, and for zoning, based on our current zoning districts, uh, staff would be recommending, uh, C-three highway commercial uh, for this particular piece of property. Subject to, of course, to planning commission, uh, consideration and recommendation and then the board's final determination, but that would be staff's recommendation as of today.
Anyone else?
Cody, this is Brad. Couple of questions. You've got a proposed annexation agreement that's included within this. It looked like.
Uh, I don't, I don't believe so. You, you might still be in the, there's, there's not a, you haven't drafted that annexation agreement just yet. You might be looking at the school district annexation agreement that was also in this packet.
Okay, that could be. Maybe I, maybe I just missed it. Would it be logical in this thing, as you did the annexation agreement, uh, the, um, you, you mentioned the reference to the, uh, and, and we can talk about this later, but you mentioned that you referenced the fact that we had the, um, the issue involving the, um, Northern Colorado Water. Would it be logical within that to put something in there that had the, the, um, requirement that they had to get approval? Um, for, from Northern Colorado Water like we do in our development agreements?
That would be logical and we already have that, um, but we can certainly include it in the agreement if it, if it helps tie up the, the legality.
Wouldn't hurt. We also have, seem to have a difference in legal descriptions. I'm not, uh, we've got an exhibit A and I guess that's what I was looking at. I was thinking that was an annexation agreement was separate. Um, and I guess it's not, but we have the resolution and the proposed annexation, the legal descriptions. It may just be that you've, you've fixed the legal descriptions because of the thirty feet that was taken out for the county road. But the annexation petition maybe is what that is, I guess, is petition. I was thinking that was an agreement. I apologize if it's read it. Seems to be different. The legal description on that seems to be different than the, um, annexation, um, the findings. Is that just, are we comfortable that those are the same?
Um, I will verify. Obviously, one of them is written in the, the county appraiser's office shorthand and the other is, is written in full. The one that's written in full was what was provided by the surveyor that they stamped. Um, I will note that and verify, uh, that those legal descriptions are, are reviewed and, and make sure that they're accurate.
My guess is they're the same thing. It's just you've got a, you've got a thirty-foot difference that's taken out relative to the county road at the end of it that's writ referenced, but you might take a peek at it.
I will absolutely do that. Thank you for pointing out that, that, uh, potential discrepancy.
Thank you.
Uh, anyone else? All right, take it to the public.
Mayor, I see no public comment at this time.
All right, we'll bring it back to the board for a vote. Can I get a motion to approve resolution thirty-six, twenty-twenty? Uh, finding substantial compliance for annexation property into the town of Wellington, uh, as described by Cody and as amended by Brad. Anyone want to take a stab at that?
This is Trustee McDonald. I'll make the motion as stated by Mayor Hammond.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Trustee Gator.
Yes.
Trustee Jerome.
Yes.
Trustee Kenny.
Yes.
Trustee McDonald.
Yes.
Trustee Whitehouse.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Knutson.
Yes.
Mayor Hammond.
Yes. All right, moving on. Item seven.
That's probably me.
Brad, talk about it.
Um, you've got a general overview of where we were relative to my memo at page, at, uh, item two oh four in the packet. Um, we have items seven, eight, nine, ten and eleven, um, which are respectively at item one forty-five, page one six seventy-three, page one ninety-eight, one ninety, page one ninety-nine and page two of one. The, uh, generally what these do and they're probably going to all, uh, my recommendation is going to be they all be tabled for the time being, um, and that we will bring them back to the board with, uh, probably cleaning it up a little bit. Item seven is, is simply the, um, um, proposed amendment or the initiated amendment that would allow for the sale of medical, made to retail marijuana. The board had the ability to act on that, chose not to do so, probably would not, we may put that in information in future packets, but probably that issue, I, well, I'd suggest we table it and then we'll clean it up. Um, probably does not need to be considered by the board further. Um, item eight, um, is the sales tax ordinance, which is, again, parts of page one seventy-three. That's what would take the sales tax and present it, uh, that the, it's the initiative they suggested go to the voters. That does, as it currently stands, need to go to the voters. The first one, the retail sales, as, as it currently stands, has been found to be insufficient, but has been, there's a pending court action. So the item eight, the sales tax, and I appreciate this is confusing. The sales tax ordinance would be going to the voters, um, as of November one, two thousand twenty-one, as it currently stands. That was not found to be insufficient. Uh, so it was sufficient as found by the hearing officer. Um, the special election would need to be reset to address that. The election judges would need to be addressed, need to change to address that. The referral measure has caused some confusion and, and we certainly can do, they have some discussion over it. As a general rule, what happens is, is the board is, is, uh, under statute required to consider, uh, item eight, which it did at a previous meeting, and determine whether it wants to adopt that as an ordinance of the town. Uh, the board did not entertain that as an ordinance of the town and it was not passed. Um, shortly after that, the hearing officer determined the ordinance was insufficient for purposes of the statute and that matter has been appealed. Uh, and two acts, two separate actions have been filed in the district court. A hearing was held on that last Wednesday, uh, and the standard for review was discussed. There were two separate actions, I said, that were filed. There are answers. The town has not yet answered the complaint. There are answers that are due, uh, by court direction on, uh, on the twentieth, I believe. Um, there's a hearing that's set on those after the answers are filed on the twenty-eighth. At this point, the retail sales ordinance is insufficient and therefore would not proceed on the ballots. Um, there's been some suggestion the town could refer that. I, I, I'm not entirely sure where that, um, stands and if there's, if you guys would like further discussion, I can certainly give it to you and we could bring that up at a future meeting. But the thought I would have is, is that we postpone the item seven issue until the, um, the board meeting on probably, let's see, it'd be, um, let's see. That one would need to be considered after the decision by the court, which could occur on the twenty-eighth. So that would probably be brought back up on the tenth. Item eight, we've, I would suggest definitely be brought back up on the tenth if you wanted, or on the, uh, I'm sorry, on October twenty-seventh. Um, and the remaining items, what we would do is table them and I would suggest that we will rewrite those, um, and, and get them back to the board in a proper form in conjunction with the tabled issues. So they'd all be tabled until, again, the twenty-seventh.
Item seven through eleven.
Item seven would be, would be tabled until November third, or no, I'm sorry, November tenth.
Which is, which is after the court decision that's going to come out, right?
Be the thought, yes, sir. No, if, potentially, I can't tell you. At this point, we just have a hearing in front of the court. I don't know what the court decision will be or if he'll make a decision on that ti- at that time. Um, we can refer the sales tax issue and get it off of here, uh, on October twenty-seventh and we would refer that, uh, or we would refer that to the voters so that it would be heard on, um, on, uh, October twenty-seventh, if that's the board's pleasure. We're not, we don't have an immediate rush, but we do need to refer it for the next election. Um, in the odd year, it'd be the first Tuesday in November, according to statute. I would suggest that nine, ten and eleven, uh, they would probably be reworked to address the fact that we'd split these up and we would get them back to you and those could be considered by the board again on October twenty-seventh and should be tabled to that date. That said, um, seven would be November tenth, the balance would be October twenty-seventh. Any questions that raises or is it confused?
Yeah, any questions?
I do have a question. So if, if for the sales tax measure, that was deemed to be sufficient.
Yes.
And we know the date of when the election would occur based on the requirements of the election, correct?
Yes, that's correct.
So why would we wait on that item?
As opposed to hearing it tonight?
Right.
Um, you know, I, I, the, the reason frankly is it wasn't a huge rush. Um, and it's, it's far enough off in the future. We're not going to, it's, it's a year away plus. And so frankly, what we were doing was getting some further guidance from the court. And so I frankly just didn't get it written, um, with the re- the referral language, which would be item twelve. So what I'd like to do is get it back to you in a proper format. We guess, we certainly could do it the night if it was ready.
So is, I would, it'd be in agreement with Trustee Kenny, um, that was deemed sufficient. I don't see any reason to table that item further.
It's just, I just don't have the language for you. I, I've spent most of Wednesday at a hearing. I was sort of recovering on Thursday and I was out of the office on Friday and Monday and I just didn't have time to get it done. So I, I think we need to redo, what the board needs to do is the board needs to refer this to the voters. In the current form of the referral issue on item eleven, uh, has this being referred to the voters? Uh, and that's, that starts at page two oh one, has both items referred to the voters? I just need to separate that and I can get that by the next meeting.
That's number, that's number eleven.
That's number eleven. The, the, the charge that you have, um, is that you have to, having not adopted the sales tax ordinance, you have to refer that to the voters. It says forthwith. Um, when we spoke before, forthwith is, is not defined by the statute. But I, again, since this doesn't go to the voters, uh, until November first of two thousand twenty-one, I, I don't think there's any great urgency. I appreciate you guys would like to get this off your plate. Uh, but in order to refer it, you have to adopt what had been, um, item eleven. And currently, that's not in a form for adoption because it still envisions the, the issues of the other adoption.
Okay, I do have another question then. I was under the impression that the sales tax one was required to go to the, the voters. It wasn't an item that is actionable by the board based on the additional sales tax. Is that true?
What needs to happen, it is required for the board to send it to the voters. What the statute says, and, and this gets confusing relative, Trustee Gator and I had this discussion earlier today. This gets confusing relative to the statutory language. Um, what an initiative is, is something that is traditionally presented by the voters to the town as a measure that should be adopted. What a referendum normally is, is something that the board adopts and the, and is referred then by the voters or by, by a petition back to the voters. So it's, it's a challenge of something you've done. That's the difference between a referendum and an initiative. What the statute provides for is that if you have an initiative, the board has the, um, ability to adopt the initiated matter, that is, that what was proposed by the voters. And if they fail to do that, or by the petition, if they fail to adopt it, they must forthwith, that's the language, refer the matter to the voters. And, and, and that, as you said, the tabor issue is a complication in that. The tabor issue because of, of constitutional restrictions cannot be referred to the voters, particularly now, uh, and meet all the requirements until November one, two thousand twenty-one. And so what you're charged with doing is referring it. Um, you also had the, had you not had the decision by the, the, um, the hearing officer finding this to be insufficient, uh, or if you had had a decision by the court finding it to be sufficient overturning the hearing officer, then you might have been required, that was what they were urging. You might have been required to refer issues to the voters in two thousand twenty-one on the sales ordinance. That's gone. And so the only current pending requirement that you have, and you have a requirement to refer this, uh, for a special election on November first, two thousand twenty-one, the sales tax ordinance. I, I'm sorry, that's confusing. I tried to simplify it. I may not.
No, that is confusing. So it's, that's confusing.
We would do that next meeting would be.
Let me ask, let me ask a straightforward question.
Please.
The board has the power, yes or no, to approve the sales tax?
The board has the power to approve. The board does no law, the board no longer has the power to approve the sales tax. It had to do that within a certain number of days and chose not to do so.
Okay. Thank you. That was my question.
Okay. If I didn't, that was your initial question. I'm sorry. I gave you the long-winded response.
Well, this, this is a very, very complicated matter and I, my experience splitting up at like initiatives that kind of are partnered together and stair stepping them, um, is generally, they're not successful. I mean, I don't care, I'm not going to state my opinion one way or another, whether I think this initiative should be successful. But I don't think that splitting up the approvals of these is, is the right thing to do. I think that it, it's better to keep everything together. Otherwise, if we start splitting things out, it could get really confusing to the public. I mean, it's kind of confusing for us and we're, we're right.
I think I've confused you because where we are, you, you have to split them out because they are separate initiatives. And at this point, one of them has been found to be.
Stop. Please stop.
I'm sorry.
Please stop. What I'm saying is, is that I agree with you that these items should be tabled. I don't think that we should pull one off to approve tonight.
Okay.
That make sense?
It is to me, yes.
Okay, thank you.
I'm sorry. I didn't mean to interrupt you.
And the purpose why I'm asking this question is for the good faith of understanding our, our liability to our community and our voters. So I don't want the perception to be that by tabling these, we're blowing them off. Uh, I don't want that to be the perception, more so that the, the sales tax piece of this was found to be sufficient and will go to the voters. And that, that's, you know, a requirement based on our obligations. By tabling it tonight is not saying that it won't happen. It's just saying that we need the language of, um, corrected in order to comply and do that.
Then that's a fair, that's a very fair statement. The other reason that I frankly did not get to the language, and, and this gets into some timing complexities, I will make, add another layer. But in theory, the, the, the hearing officer's decision was issued on, uh, it was circulated on September twenty-first of this year. On, it was circulated on September 21st of this year. Um, the court has tentatively said. That this is to proceed under a rule identified as rule 106 in the rules of civil procedure. That would mean that the hearing officer's decision would be appealable. Not only by the proponents of the ordinance, but also by the protesters if they wish to do so. Or by the town. Um, by, for a period of 28 days. That 28 days would expire. On September 20, the September 27th board meeting. Um, yeah, from that perspective, that, or October 27th board meeting, I'm sorry. Um, that said, or it would get us to the October 27th board meeting. We're still somewhat early for this now. Um, and so, uh, my suggestion would be we table that. The issue on the sales tax until the next meeting. If you count 28 days from. The hearing officer's decision, I'm sorry, expires October 19th. And so that would, that would get us to the following board meeting, which.
So. Now. Brad, can I ask a question without making this more complicated?
I doubt it, but I'll try to not do that.
Okay. Uh. Why would you, why would you refer this retail marijuana sales tax? You don't have anything approved anyway. We got nothing.
Well.
Why are we?
We have to refer, as was pointed out by trustee McDonald. At this point, you haven't adopted it. It has been deemed to be sufficient and therefore it needs to be, um, referred. The board has.
How can they approve something to be sufficient if this never passed?
No, no. It is sufficient to go to the board. The, the form. Of the, of the ordinance as presented, and this was a separate ordinance for the sales taxes. Was deemed to be sufficient. Again, that will be challenged and so we ought to wait until the September, the November. I'm sorry.
I agree. I'm not trying.
Yeah.
All right. Good enough. Does anybody else want to talk about this?
It sounds like we're soliciting protests and I, I think that's unfortunate. I think.
By no means am I suggesting that. I, I just, there's a protest period that's open. And by no means would I, I, I mean, the protests have been made. There's a time period that the court seems to be following. Um, by no, to the point that the town has the ability to protest and I have not suggested that the town should file a protest. Um, I, I don't, I don't see a further protest coming. I'm just being, that was the reason I said I held off. It's not, it's the reason I didn't initially put that forward. But I think it is prudent based upon the timeframes involved.
Okay. My hope is really that it is a clarifiable item of the wording. And not waiting for those if maybe what could happen because we have an obligation to our voters.
Indeed. But we also have an obligation to follow the statute.
So I would like to get a little clarification. Um, because I've had a lot of conflicting information that have come to me from different citizens with, uh. And I understand this has been confusing for a lot of people. So I would like to just clarify, Brad. With the process that has been ongoing, um, and I understand that the initiatives were brought forward. And then there was a protest period that was put in place. Um, is that something that the town of Wellington came up with for this protest period? Or is that something that is in the state statutes?
No, sir. To give you a general overview. Um, what happened was, was that the petitions were deemed sufficient. There is that a protest period by statute. After the sufficiency is, is, after they're deemed to be sufficient, in which any elector can protest. Two protests were filed and the town board, because the clerk, as you said, this is a very confusing matter. Uh, and it's, um, loaded with legal issues as you, as you also can see. Uh, the, the town board at the request also of the petitioners. Designated the town judge, the municipal judge, as the hearing officer. Protests were filed within the protest period. Um, the last day of the protest, two protests were filed. The hearing ju, the officer heard those protests within the requisite period of time, which is a very short time spring. And she issued a determination, the municipal judge did. Uh, she issued a determination as to the sufficiency on September 20th. Having done that, um, that was a Sunday, that was the day hers was issued. It became available on the 21st. She found in that petition that the sufficient, that the, that, or in that findings, that the petitions. Um, were. She did not make a finding relative to the sales tax. So it's continued to be assumed to be sufficient. She did find that the retail and sales petitions were insufficient. And, and having done that, again, that was issued on the 21st. The protester or the proponents of the petition have the right to file an action in the district court. They filed actually three actions. The first of those actions was dismissed by the district judge. The second action was a challenge of the protesters. Uh, uh, I'm sorry, of the, of the decision relative to the protests. Um, and that's pending. The third action was an action that, um, was filed the day before the here, the, the first initial hearing. On the second action, and they're looking at consolidating that with the second action. The hope would be, and the, the judge has recognized that this matter cannot be heard. Uh, before the November 3rd election and it can't get to the November 3rd election. Um, the judge has required the town to file answers to petitions, uh, which we're, we will have done. Um, by the 20th. And is expediting a hearing by the 28th. Um, the, the here, the, the answers on the 20th have been expedited. The town is very willing to do that. We've made it very, very clear that we're not trying. To circumvent the process. As a matter of fact, we'll try and expedite the process. Um, and they hit the, the initial hearings on the 28th. Um, you know, everybody has rights in these things. At this point, the petition was, the petitions on sales were found to be insufficient. Those may or may not be overturned.
Okay. So I just want to be very clear. So the town is not trying to interfere with the, with the process that is going to the voters. We are simply following what is statutorily required by law. Is that correct?
That is correct. At this point, my role as a town attorney. Um, unless the board tells me otherwise, I suppose, but my role generally is the town of attorney. Would be to, uh, see that the. The decision of the hearing officer is upheld and that's, that's the position we're in.
Couldn't we just do that based on the known and existing findings?
Well, I mean. Okay. I, I don't, I guess I don't understand your question.
I, I guess if, if we were to refer this to voters and we would continue on and not continue tabling these, because I see that happening on and on and on and on. Based on whatever kind of appeals or things or actions that may be occurring. If we were to approve them and then they were later to be found insufficient, or whatever the case might be. Wouldn't that then supersede and then cancel that action in some kind of way?
Well, there, there are issues. I mean, that there were a couple of things we looked at the potential of doing. The, there have been discussions, uh, and I, I think there was a sense that there was. A great deal of complexity and there'd be a lot of confusion if we did this. There were potential discussions surrounding the possibility of just simplifying this. And referring a yes, no question to the voters. Do the voters want to see the sale of retail and medical marijuana? Yes or no?
Right.
Um, and, and that's a possibility. The concern that I heard was voiced with that. Um, was that the. Result of that would be that there would be a potential of three elections. The first election, the yes, no election. If the, if the, um, petitioners then were successful in their legal bid. Um, then there would potentially, we would have to send the petitions onto the voters. Um, in the form with all the administrative stuff, the regulatory stuff that's, that, that was found to be. Um, problematic. Uh, those petitions, if the court said they're not problematic, would have to be sent to the voters again. So you'd be voting on some of the same question. Um, that, that was thought to be a concern. And, and the suggestion particularly from the clerk. Was that it may make substantially more sense to wait and see what the outcomes relative to the elections were. Or relative to the court action was. Before you start scheduling further elections. We cannot send these, I thi, I think this answers your questions. We cannot at this point. Send these initiated matters to the voters. Because they are not sufficient and don't comply with the statute based upon the findings of the judge.
Correct.
So you can't do that. No, and I, I think your question was, can we send it? And then if they're bound to be insufficient, just disregard it. And I think the answer to that is no.
Okay. Um, so I guess my other question is an intention. That this, this topic is so very controversial. I think everybody would agree with that. Um, and I think that the, personally, I think that the only way. That this should be heard is from voters. I think the people need to decide whether or not this should happen. Sales of marijuana should happen in Wellington.
I am.
I'm, just a second, Brad.
I'm sorry. I apologize. I thought, I thought you were finished.
No, I'm not. So with that said. I think that we should bring this to the voters. And I understand that existing petition has tied up legally. And there are a lot of concerns and things that are going on with that. I think that the intention of the petitions. And those who signed the petition was that they want to have a decision made by the people and voters of Wellington, decide whether or not we should allow the sales of marijuana. So with that said. I believe that it is the responsibility of the board to uphold that question to the voters. And to bring up language in an or, uh, ordinance of referendum. In order to ask the question to the voters of yes or no, do you want marijuana sales in Wellington? Because that is really the question that's at stake. But the perspective of everybody who's watching is saying that the board is blocking. Or the town is blocking this. Now.
I haven't heard that. That's an opinion. I haven't heard that. We've got. No, we have language here that is not cleaned up. And it needs to get.
Just a second.
I am.
Okay.
And we've been talking about it a long time now. Now, this is a lot of, it's not been cleaned up. You're talking about something else. We're just talking about seven through 11.
Let me, let me finish my, my thought just really quickly.
Okay, let's make it quick.
I think that from the perspective of the board, we should bring this topic to the voters. And the language that is acceptable. Um, and controlled from our perspective. With all the administrative discussions as we would want it to come to the voters with a simple, simplify it. So, so whether or not voters can decide yes or no marijuana sales should happen in Wellington. I don't want this perspective to continue. Um, that's very detrimental to our board and our community and our culture within Wellington. And I think that as we continue to table these items, that is the perspective that is perceived. Um, so I'd love for us to start discussing alternative options to ensure. And give again, that good faith that this is not the intent of the board. So that's my statement.
Anyone else?
Can you, you want me, can I respond to that real quick?
I would actually. Mayor Hammond, if that's okay.
Please, please go for it.
Okay. So, and I would agree with trustee Kenny. I do believe that this is an issue that does need to be decided by the voters and I am not opposed to putting together. A separate item that we just send to the voters, very simple, yes or no. I do have concerns regarding multiple elections. I, I don't know the best option with that. I know. The number we had from before was roughly $15,000 to $20,000 to run an election. Which currently we don't have budgeted. So that is a little bit of a concern trying to balance the fiscal responsibility. But to address the issues of. The board intentionally trying to interfere with the voters' rights, I think that I would. Ask that one, the citizens make sure that they are sharing the facts of, the full facts of the situation. And I think that. I know for myself, I've made that available, but really sharing with people is. We are not going outside. We are following the processes that have been put forth by statute. We did not create these processes. We did not come up with these processes. But we are required to follow the law. And so I think that if we can make sure, one, on our side, that we are following those statutes, we are not stepping outside of those on either side, whether it's to. Impede or to progress one side or the other. Um, so I want to make sure that we are doing that, but two, make sure that we are also asking the citizens to make sure they're taking into account all of the facts that we. All of the conversations I have heard within the board and within the town would agree with trustee Kenny's statement that this is a decision that should be made by the voters. And with the protests that were brought up, that is the right of any citizen within this town. And then that decision was not made by the board, that was made by the municipal judge. And then we are following the current legal process that is required by law where. The, and it's continuing to the next level of court, well, that will be decided. And my understanding is that this board, regardless of what, so if the, if the court comes back and says these are sufficient, the board will pass those on to the voters immediately. But we are simply waiting. To hear what we can do. And I think that we need to make sure that is clearly communicated because unfortunately, not all of the information has been communicated to all of the public.
If I could follow up on both of those, Ms. Brad March again. Um. Part of the concern here and, and part of what the hearing officer found. Um, I did a memo that's in the packet. It was dated September 6th. Um, we reviewed these ordinances with the state, which is charged the state level with administering, administering marijuana sales. Um, the response that we got on the short line from the state officer who reviewed them was these are a mess. Um, they, they have a great, they have a number of regulatory. Um. Operational things that are in them and they, they're, they're hard to track. They don't, they don't cite the right statutes. That was part of why the court, uh, the hearing officer threw these out was they, the hearing officer indicated that a chunk of these. Resolutions as presented or petitions as presented. Are administrative in nature and therefore were insufficient. She found them to be insufficient on two grounds. That was one. Um, in an effort.
Are you talking about both resolutions or?
No, I, I'm talking only about the retail marijuana sale.
So you keep saying that. So it's.
I apologize. I, I thank you for the clarification. It's, it's just the one she threw out. Um, the, the, the court found that there were significant administrative numbers of administrative provisions. That were included within that specific initiated ordinance. And, and found those to be insufficient and inappropriate. That was one of the reasons for her findings are actually two, that she found the petition to be insufficient. Those issues need to be resolved. Um. I went to the proponents of that initiated ordinance and suggested that I believe that there might be an ability. To have the town board simply refer on a yes, no answer. Does the town wish to allow the sale of retail and medical marijuana? Um, and suggested that if they would not pursue their, um. Appeal of the hearing officer's decision. That I felt that there would be a willingness, because I've heard this from, I think virtually all the town board members. That there would be a willingness to refer the question to the voters. The response that I got back was that the proponents of the petition. Would not be willing to accept that option. They wanted to pursue their appeal. My response to that was that I assumed. That the basis that they wished to pursue their appeal. Was because essentially what the ordinance did with the ra, the regulatory provisions that the judge took down. Was it emaciated the town's ability to. Enforce the, the, these, the, um, the sale of marijuana. Um, basically it substantially trimmed it down to say the least. Um. I believe that is the reason that they want to pursue it. As, as those ordinances were proposed.
Okay. Well, I don't think we should make conjectures of their, their.
Well, okay, fair enough, fair enough. That, that was, that's the only reason I can come up with, but fa, fair enough. I don't, I, I, I agree with you. I tried to phrase my words. Carefully. The. The concern that we have now is that we have that pending. The court could disagree with the hearing officer's decision. And the result could be we could have three separate elections. Um, and that's confusing. Um, that if the, if you wish to see, um, a yes, no question referred, and I, and I've suggested, I don't know that that's illogical. Um, we could certainly do that. Um, recognize the other issue is still pending. Um, if we did it, it would need to be approved by the board. And in order to do that, in order to get it on the agenda, it would need to be put on the agenda by two trustees. Um, if there are two trustees that. Um, if there are two trustees that, um, want to tell the town administrator that needs to be on the agenda, I would be happy to put a referred measure, a yes, no question um, on the ballot or on the agenda for discussion at the next meeting.
Okay, Brad, thank you so much for that information. That sounds like that would be a separate agenda item potentially out of what we're discussing this evening.
That's my point. Yes, it would be.
That was my.
Back to our agenda items, if that's okay.
I'd like to.
Um, I don't have any more i- questions or comments about the specific items that are presented on the agenda this evening. I guess Mayor Hammond, if you wanted to open it up to the public, that would be a good time. Or do, are we looking to table all of these items? Do we want to address them individually, one by one?
Brad, what's your recommendation?
My recommendation that you table item seven to the November 10th meeting. Item eight to the October 27th, items eight, nine, 10 and 11 to the October 27th meeting.
Okay, prior to doing a consideration for tabling, is there, I think, is there any public that would like to speak about these agenda items?
What, you want me to ask the public? Is that what you're asking me to do?
I think that you should open it up.
I, from a traditional standpoint, if we're not discussing these issues, I think.
There are members of the public who attended our call today with the intentions of providing some public comment, I, I, I assume. They did not doing it, do it at the beginning of the meeting because they were instructed to not do it based on items that are actionable on the agenda.
What do you want to do, trustee Kenny? What do you want to do?
I want to hear from the public.
All right, turn it over to the public.
There's so much misconjecture. I think we need.
Turn it over to the public. We have enough. Let's go. Crystal.
Members of the public, if you would like to speak, please raise your hand at this time and you will be called upon.
The process for speaking is raising your hand if anybody did want to do that. That's the only way that we can see that you would want to speak. Doesn't look like it.
Mayor Hammond, I see no hands raised at this time for public comment.
Okay, we'll bring it back to the board.
Thank you, Mayor Hammond, for opening that consideration to the public. With that, I'll motion that we, um, table item number seven and then I'll motion separately for items eight through 11. I will motion that we, um, table item number seven until November 10th.
Anyone want a second?
Second.
Let's hear a roll call.
Trustee Gator.
Yes.
Trustee Jerome.
Yes.
Trustee Kenny. Trustee McDonald.
Yes.
Trustee Whitehouse.
Yes.
Mayor Protam Knutson.
Yes.
Mayor Hammond.
Yes. Item eight, proposed ordinance and ordinance concerning retail marijuana sales tax.
Mayor Hammond, respectfully, I'll ask that we, um, motion to table items eight, item nine, item 10 and item 11 until October 27th.
Point of information, I think that we have to do these as separate, as separate action items.
So true, Brad.
It's my understanding it would be a separate action. The last time we did this, they were.
Concerns item eight.
All right, item eight, proposed ordinance and ordinance concerning retail marijuana sales tax in the town of Wellington, Colorado. I motion to table that item until October 27th.
Can we get a second?
Second.
Roll call.
Trustee Gator.
Yes.
Trustee Jerome.
Yes.
Trustee Kenny.
No, for the reason that this has been found sufficient and should go, and should be approved.
Trustee McDonald.
Yes.
Trustee Whitehouse.
Uh, table, yes.
Mayor Protam Knutson.
Yes.
Mayor Hammond.
Yes.
Yes, six yays and one nay.
Item nine.
Item nine, I'll make a motion to table item nine, resolution number 30 dash 2020. A resolution calling a special election in the town of Wellington, Colorado until October 27th.
Second. Go ahead.
Trustee Gator.
Yes.
Trustee Jerome.
Yes.
Trustee Kenny.
No, same reason.
Trustee McDonald.
Yes.
Trustee Whitehouse.
Yes.
Mayor Protam Knutson.
Yes.
Mayor Hammond.
Yes.
You have six yays and one nay.
I have 10.
Agenda item number 10, I motion to table resolution number 31 2020. A resolution authorizing the town clerk to appoint election judges for the special election until October 27th.
Second.
Roll call.
Trustee Gator.
Yes.
Trustee Jerome.
Yes.
Trustee Kenny. Trustee Kenny.
Come back to her.
Trustee McDonald.
Yes.
Trustee Whitehouse.
Yes.
Mayor Protam Knutson.
Yes.
Mayor Hammond.
Yes. Okay, item 11, it's a resolution 36 2020.
Agenda item number 11, I make a motion to table resolution 36 2020. A resolution referring a ballot question to October 27th.
Can we reflect, can we reflect for the record that it appears that, uh, uh, trustee Kenny has signed off or is not, um, any longer in the meeting?
I will make that record.
Thank you.
Well, I'll need a roll call.
Trustee Gator.
Yes.
Trustee Jerome.
Yes.
Trustee McDonald.
Yes.
Trustee Whitehouse.
Yes, point of information, we did get a second on that, correct?
Yeah, I did.
Yep.
Mayor Protam Knutson.
Yes.
Mayor Hammond.
Yes. Okay. Uh, moving on to reports, the town attorney, anything more on this initiative?
You've heard enough from me.
I think so. I look forward to coming back with some clean language.
There you go.
Item two, town administrator.
Nothing additional. Thank you.
Item three, anything from the staff or the Durham County sheriffs?
Mayor, Sergeant Merton with the sheriff's office, you all have our report in front of you from August. The, the only thing I'll, I'll point out on it, and then I'm open to any questions, any, any one of you have on it, is that the dispatch calls were up 31% um, this August from, from last year. Uh, correspondingly, then our officer, our officer initiated stuff was, was down significantly, so. I can go into more detail on that if anyone wants it or, uh, has any questions about why I think that happened.
Anyone want to dive into that?
I do have a couple of questions. I noticed on some of the crime types and averages, we saw a very large increase in animal calls as well as theft over not only the average, but the previous year. Do we have any ideas into what's driving that or what might be cause of some of those issues with those large increases?
Certainly, um, in, thank you for bringing it, Commissioner Gator, not Commissioner, sorry. Um, so on the animal calls and the municipal code violations, uh, those both had very large increases. That I would attribute primarily due to, uh, better reporting by the neighborhood services officer. Um, he's making sure that, uh, all of those calls are, uh, logged by dispatch. And he's handling the majority of, of those calls. Uh, the theft, um, looking at that, uh, past years, eight, seven, five, and then 10 this year. I, I don't have a specific cause or, or reason, you know, that, that that would have increased this year, uh, whether that was, I, I did, I did not look into those as far as whether those were shoplifting things or if they were, you know, thefts from, uh, people's property.
Okay, and then I know that there was, I know, I did hear from a few citizens over the last week that there's been some increase in vehicle thefts or people going around trying to break into vehicles. Is that something that has been brought to your attention?
We had a couple of reports yesterday of, of that, you know, one in Buffalo, Buffalo Creek that was kind of our, our standard, uh, vehicle trespass calls that, that we get uh, periodically throughout the year, unlocked vehicle, um, that was entered and, and gone through. Um, we also had one report down in, uh, Sage Meadows. That again was an unlocked vehicle, in this case, in an open garage, so. It's not, not to say that it's the fault of the person in that, because it's not. In that, you know, you, people should leave your property alone and that it's, it's not theirs to be taking, but um, we can certainly do, do more, you know, to protect our own, uh, property by making sure that our doors are locked and, uh, enclosed. Um, and then just being vigilant and if you see something that's out of place in your neighborhood, making sure you call and report it to us, uh, posting it on Facebook. Uh, this is not a timely way for us to get the information to be able to try and locate the person and apprehend them.
Okay, and then another question I had for you, Sergeant Riden, and this was brought to the board's attention here, I believe, a couple of days ago. We received an email, um, from a citizen who had had a, I believe was a Black Lives Matter sign had been, or flag, I think. I don't remember exactly, is a flag or a sign had been stolen from their property. And we've seen multiple, or I've heard of multiple accounts of this happening. And I understand that this is election season, but I'd like to know what we can do because this is a behavior, I don't care which side of the aisle people are on, that is not acceptable for me to see in our town. So I'd like to know that we, uh, with you as our law enforcement side can, you know, whatever is within your power to really help to do what we can to keep this down.
Sure. A, in, in Wellington is not unique i- in this, uh, sort of thing going on during, uh, campaign seasons. Um, but, uh, I posted a, a reminder, uh, to people today that, that, you know, if you're going onto somebody else's property, you're trespassing. If you're taking their stuff or you're damaging their stuff, you're committing crimes of, you know, criminal mischief or theft. You know, beyond that, you know, we're out there, we're, we're looking at things, but, uh, you know, obviously, we, we can't be everywhere all the time. If somebody sees someone, you know, taking, you know, going onto somebody else's property and, and damaging or, or taking things and you can get a, a video of it with your cell phone or, or dash cam, something like that, and bring that to us, we would love to identify who's doing these things and, um, in, in, charge them as appropriate or, um, you, or do whatever, whatever it takes to, um, educate, because I don't know right now, you know, I hear different things from different people. I don't know if it's young people doing this just because they like to create mischief or if it's adults who are, you know, thinking that if I take all of your signs down, that, that means my, you know, the, the issue that I'm supporting is going to somehow win because I took your signs away from you.
And on my personal side, I would prefer with this issue to see more of a lean towards enforcement versus education. I mean, I understand if it's a seven-year-old, maybe we need to have a conversation. But this is something I personally and the rest of the board can say otherwise. If you feel otherwise, I would like to see this be something that we don't tolerate. That going in and, and doing things with other people's property is unacceptable for any reason. It's not your property, you shouldn't be touching it. And I, I don't want any of that in our town at all.
You, you and I are on the same page on that, uh, there. As far as if I'm contacting someone and they're an adult, they know better and I, I certainly have no issue with filing charges at that point.
Okay.
Any other questions for Sheriff? Thank you, Sheriff. Appreciate all the hard work you guys are doing over there. And, uh, feel free to reach out anytime. We can help you as a board.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, if I might, I note for the record that trustee Kenny rejoined the meeting. Um, trustee Kenny, there were votes on items nine, 10 and 11 to postpone um, until September 27th, or I mean, uh, no, yeah, October 27th. Um, if you'd like to register a vote, I assume you could do that.
Thank you. My vote on those are no, based on the fact that those items were found to be sufficient and should be scheduled timely in order to go to the voters. On all those items.
Okay. Uh, anything else, Brad? No, sir. All right, board members, your turn. Do you have anything you'd like to say? Any other items, whatever it is? This is your, your time.
I have a couple of things. I wanted to give a sincere, uh, thank you and just show my gratitude to our planning team who has been put through the wringer for negotiations regarding the annexation for PSD. I know that's been a lengthy process. Um, and I know that they have the intentions of our best interests from the perspective of the town. And I really appreciate that. Um, so I think you guys did a great job. Um, and I really appreciate everything that you've done to that. I know it's been months and months, so thank you for your work on that. Another, just a quick announcement is that all of the students who are enrolled in our local schools will be going to school, um, starting next week. Only the littles were going last two weeks, so we will have children, pedestrians all over, um, riding bikes, walking to school. Um, we haven't had that since spring break. So please, um, any members of the community, uh, advocate for safety and kindness uh, as that's approaching, to make sure that we're taking care of our community and really living that small town charm that we, we boast about, be a good neighbor and a good driver and keep each other safe. Um, the other thing is, it touches on, uh, what trustee Gator brought up. Not only, um, is that theft an issue, repercussions or anger on that as causing other harm to our community too. I personally received threats at my home with the accusation that I'm somebody who's stealing signs. I can assure you, I'm not stealing anything. If anything, trying to put up all my cameras in my neighborhood where a lot of those thefts have been occurring on Harrison. In a hope of assisting to find anybody who might be doing those actions, so, um, just be kind to one another. Disagree, but be kind. Those are my items. Thank you.
Thank you, trustee Kenny, for that. And I sure look forward to seeing the schools open up again in full. Uh, anyone else?
One item and just a request, um, from the town attorney, if we can please make sure that the wording for the sales tax initiative is properly separated and ready to go for our next meeting so that. The wording for the sales tax initiative is properly separated and ready to go for our next meeting so that we can approve the portion that was deemed to be sufficient. That would be much appreciated.
Will do.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay. Big stuff, next meeting. So hopefully let's get all our paperwork cleaned up so we can get through it and get some good votes and get it done. Thank you all for tonight. Appreciate the intensity. I have. 857, I'd like to get a motion to adjourn.
I moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Have a nice evening, all. Next time.